Good evening and welcome to WCAT's Candidate Debates. Tonight we have two different debates. We have the School Committee first, followed by the Selectmen. The town election is upcoming April 24th, and I am the moderator for the debate. My name is Bill Carroll. Before the debate, lots were drawn to determine the order of the candidates, and the candidates are Colleen Guida, James Horn, Susan Vayer, and Robert Vincent. A fifth candidate, Amy Purcell, due to a family commitment, was unable to participate tonight. And also, James Horn is not here yet. That's about the best way I can put it. We have no idea, but if he comes, shows up at some point, we will ease him on into the proceedings. The press panel this evening is, on my left, is Mark Sardella from the Wakefield Daily Item. And presenting questions for the Wakefield Observer is Tom Stapleton. The reporter from the Observer was unable to make it also. So we've got three note shows tonight to start things off. There are going to be no opening statements in this debate. And I will read the rules strictly here. In turn, a question will be asked of a candidate by the press panel. The candidates will have two minutes to respond to the question, followed by following that response, that each remaining candidate will have the opportunity to present his or her one-minute response to the question. To allow for as many questions as possible in the time available while maintaining the ability for all to have a chance to respond, candidates should please keep their answers short and to the point. Questions, you don't have to use the whole two minutes, trust me. Questions have not been provided to candidates in advance. Questions must be relevant to the issues important to the town, and questions of a personal nature are not allowed, you guys. At the end of the debate, in turn, each candidate will present a two-minute closing statement. The producer, David Watts, Jr., requires me to maintain strict compliance with the stated time limits in order to be able to have as many questions as possible from the press panel. So I'll time them, and, you know, we may have to cut somebody off. It says here, "The moderator will govern the conduct of the debate at all times," so let's relax. Let us begin with the debate questions. Because there's three of you, we don't have to switch this order. Sometimes that gets all mumbo jumboed, but you won't have the same person giving you the same question, okay? I'm good at math here. Three, two. Mark, why don't you kick things off with Colleen?
Do you think Wakefield schools are safe? And are there any ways that you think they could be safer?
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. I do think Wakefield Public Schools are safe currently. However, there's always improvements to be made in any school system. I believe that we do not need to have or arm our teachers with guns or have metal detectors in our schools in Wakefield. We are lucky to live in a state, as Massachusetts is, with strong gun violence protection laws. And in our own town, we have constant collaboration between our safety leaders, our school leaders, and our parents, who work to provide a safe network and best practices to help keep our students safe in our schools. I do believe that we need to constantly improve and react to the national tragedies that occur and keep improving the practices that our schools are involved in now. With the last tragedy, I know that we were communicated with immediately, and we responded with improving the practices that already exist in our schools. I also think it's vitally important that our students have a trusted adult in the schools. I believe that there is a direct link between them having a trusted adult that they can talk to, and if a student is struggling with the social, emotional, or mental illnesses, they feel comfortable going to a trusted adult, and maybe this can be seen to decrease some of the gun violence and issues that arise in school from illnesses that occur in our schools. Thank you.
Bob, one minute follow-up?
I concur that these schools are safe. We have district and high school crisis teams. We recently implemented the ALIS program, Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. We have two school resource officers, and many other towns around here only have one. One of the things that impressed me about the ALIS program and the program that the school resource officers do, it moves from the old lock-in place to using technology information so the staff and students can make informed decisions with the emphasis being on trying to remove themselves from the danger zone. And one of the things I learned when they do the drills is that they'll have the students and staff lock in place, then they'll say that the intruder is in another part of the building, they'll move to try to evacuate, then they get told, "He's back in that area," and they go back and locking down in another classroom. So the adaptability phase of this makes things much safer than the old system of just lock in place.
Susan?
I can say from my direct experience at the Dole Bear and the Galvin that those schools seem very secure and safe. After Newtown, there were changes made specifically at the Dole Bear that I know about, and then with the Galvin being a new school, I think that the security and cameras and everything that's kind of necessary is available there. I do think that there may be some security and safety issues at the high school based on the assessment that was done of the building needing to be kind of renovated and rebuilt. They identified some things that need to be looked at. So I do think that there may be some open items that need to be addressed there. But I think that we could easily address some of those issues with minor investments. And I think that for the other schools that I don't have experience with, I think it might be valuable to do an audit, kind of like what they've done at the high school, to look at, you know, I suspect the Woodville is probably pretty safe because it's a relatively new school, and I say "safe" in the kind of the building facility. But I honestly have no idea what's happening at the Greenwood or the Walton, and so maybe doing an audit there, similar to what they did at the high school, would be valuable.
Thank you. Tom Stapleton, for the Observer.
Yes, yes. Hello. Am I interesting?
You question.
Okay.
To Bob.
To Bob, right, okay. Why are you interested in running for this position, Bob?
Now, thank you for the question. The Parkland High School in the aftermath caused me to reflect on my personal experiences in similar situations. I was actually in the Pentagon on September 10th, and I was only two blocks away on September 11th. And I also had occasion when I was legal counsel overseas, providing school safety protocols for the elementary school that my own children attended. It also made me reflect on my public education experience with my children during my 26-year military career, and also my career as a military attorney and a poet judge. Every two to four years, the Navy sent me to a different assignment. It was new, and it was challenging. And I look at being on the school committee as the new and latest challenge in my life. I've reviewed the school committee's powers and functions, and I believe that my public school experiences, along with my judicial and legal abilities, will enhance the outstanding job of our current school committee, and I want to apply my skill set to maintaining our outstanding public school system here in Wakefield.
Thank you. You know, I'm going to, this is sort of a general question, and I'm going to give everybody two minutes on this one, okay? Just you have, you don't have to take it, but you have it, okay? You're up next. Susan, thank you.
So I would say that ever since my kids entered elementary school, I've been interested in learning more about what is going on behind the scenes at Wakefield Public. I had, I was lucky enough to have educators that lived on my street, who I would go and ask questions and say, like, "Hey, is this the way that this is supposed to work?" And they would share that kind of information with me, and sometimes it was, "Hey, you know, Wakefield's doing a great job with this," and sometimes it would be, "You know what? Wakefield could maybe be doing something different." And so early on, I started getting interested in kind of public education, started going to some school committee meetings, and just learning. And what I found is that I'm really interested in public education. My professional background is marketing and high tech. It has nothing to do with education, but a hobby isn't the greatest way to describe it, but I kind of feel like I have an unusual, compared to my friends, an unusual interest in what's going on in the public schools. And I've spent time researching and educating myself on what's happening in town because I'm genuinely interested in it. And really, why I decided to run was related to realizing that my passion about public education, particularly in Wakefield, was different than other people, and probably made me a good candidate to run.
Colleen?
Yes, I would have to echo Susie's statement as well. As a mother of four children in the Wakefield Public Schools, I have, since they started elementary school as well, I have always been interested in, first at the Greenwood School, in the goings-on of school and how I could get involved. I didn't really see it as an option for me not to be involved, so I just jumped in wherever someone wanted me to. In doing that, you learn a lot about the goings-on in the building, and then further on, in other buildings, and then in the administration of the schools. And aside from being involved in the PTOs at the Greenwood Elementary and the Woodville Elementarys, I have been a member of the Wakefield Educational Foundation for the last several years, and I'm currently on the Board of Directors for the Wakefield Educational Foundation. And I think that experience has definitely led me to the point where I am now, which is ready to take on this next job. I think that in the past few years, I have been a Director of the Grant Process, and in doing that, you work directly with the administrators, the schools, the students, the parents, PTO leaders, and really understand the day-to-day goings-on and how not only can a foundation support and enrich the students' experience, but how we can all do that as well. So I think that I'm ready to move to the next step and understand and work towards continuing to enhance the educational experience in Wakefield, and I'm ready to learn something new.
Thank you. Mark, your question for Suzanne.
What is your view of the Learn Anywhere program for snow days? Do you think that the requirement that kids spend 20 minutes a day per subject is the equivalent of a six-hour school day?
So, personally, this program has worked well for one of my children and not so well for the other child. And I have two fifth graders who are twins, so they're kind of the same academic level, let's call it. But in talking with other people over the last few weeks, I know that not everybody feels like it's working well or not working well. It's kind of, there's mixed feelings about the program. And I think that there is an opportunity to fine-tune it. Your statement about 20 minutes per subject is kind of an interesting one. You know, is it enough to replicate a day? Probably not. And I think that older students are probably getting more than 20 minutes. I actually haven't heard that statement of 20 minutes per subject, personally. I do believe that our children deserve 180 days of instruction, whether it be on snowy days or warm days in June. And I believe that kids on IEPs are struggling with this, particularly because the execution of this for that type of child is problematic. So I think some of the parents are not as happy with the program, specifically parents that have kids on IEPs. I understand that parents have to explicitly request that that IEP time be made up, and that may not be scheduled during a normal school day. So to me, that's just problematic, right? It seems like all the kid, in an ideal world, a kid is getting the same instruction they would get on a normal day. So overall, I think there's more work to do on the execution of the program. I think in theory, it is a great idea. It's in line with a state program that the state has put in place. It's not like we made this up. But, you know, and it's working well for some people, but I do think it's not working well for everyone, and I think we need to be looking at it more closely.
Thank you. Colleen, one minute.
Yes, Learn Anywhere, I believe, is a progressive program, and I feel like I want to commend Wakefield for taking on the program in its inaugural year this year. It is definitely a work in progress. I think that anytime you create a new program and push it out to the masses, you're going to see the positives, the negatives, the pros and the cons, and we look for feedback. I know that teachers, administrators, our superintendent relies on the feedback of the parents and the students so that they can assess the program, and I think we need to continuously do that. I've also seen in my house how it comes in different variations, from my oldest, who's a senior, down to my fourth grader at the Greenwood and my middle school students. So there are inconsistencies with it. I think that, you know, when you have multiple teachers at the middle school level and the high school level, I think that consistencies need to be made there. But I don't think that we should go, sorry, stray away from the program, but we need to press on and improve the program.
Thank you. Bob?
I too agree and applaud the school system for coming up with an innovative program, which was just initiated last spring. I think it is too early to tell whether it's an adequate substitute for an actual school day, and I also concur that we need feedback on how the program works before we can decide how it should be tinkered with in order to be more effective in the future.
Next question. Are you, who's up? You're up? You're up, yeah.
Okay. Colleen, do you feel the existing student activity fees in the district are fair? Why, or why not?
I believe this is the first year of a rollout of reduced user fees, and I think it's happening over a three-year period. And I do believe they are fair. I'm speaking to the three-year rollout. I think that it's a great move in the right direction. User fees can really be, you know, quite debilitating to some families and should never be the reason why some student decides to do or not do something. But I do believe that they do need to be charged some fee because not all students participate in activities after school. And for these programs to be successful and continue on, there needs to be a fee attached to them. And again, I applaud the Wakefield Public Schools for coming up with a plan that's fair and that, over the course of three years, will definitely ease some of the parents and the families.
Bob?
Yeah, I concur that this is a good initiative to increase the opportunity for people to participate in these after-school activities. Last year, I noticed was the first year that they had been rolled back. This year, they're being rolled back even more. I think that, once again, it shows the initiative of the school system here in Wakefield of opening up opportunity for all students to the best extent possible.
Susan?
So I have a slightly different approach on this. So I look at expenses and think about what do we want and what do we need? We want to lower user fees, absolutely. That makes sense. And certainly, I agree with both of you guys that we should not be limiting a kid's potential to be a part of a sport. But I do wonder if that $90,000, which I believe is what the expenses for this year that will be spent to reduce fees, could be spent somewhere else more effectively for something that we really need versus something that we want. So I feel like, I think user fees are necessary, unfortunately, and I think, but they should not limit a child's ability to participate, and I would think that a scholarship program or something like that could kind of cover off on those kids. So I think there's a, I think there's a slightly different way that you could look at this.
Mark?
Is this to Bob?
Yeah.
What experience do you have with complex budgets, and what criteria would you use to determine whether or not a budget is good for the system?
Well, I have a lot of experience with complex budgets from my time in the military. I was actually the first lawyer assigned to the aircraft carrier, Harriet S. Truman, and as a plank owner on a new ship, we had very tight budgets and timeframes that we had to deal with in order to get that ship ready for commissioning in 1998. When I look at the, I also had experience, of course, during different parts of my military career, stationed overseas, as well as stationed here within the United States, and being in offices where we were given a budget, and the judge advocate general expected us to abide by that budget, and if not, we had to spell out with specificity why we needed additional monies. When I look at the budget process here in Wakefield, what impresses me is the transparency that I see with the budget process. I know this year, there's a little bit of angst that it's going to possibly be greater than 4%, but I look at the fact that the superintendent, at a very early stage, was upfront in terms of what the expenses would be, especially, you know, when I look at the expenses, the personnel costs and the operational costs collectively are just over 4%, and those are contractually bound. But the special education costs and the unanticipated student placements, she was very upfront early on, that, hey, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts didn't give us the 75%. They only gave us 65, and we had 11 unanticipated student placements. So seeing how it's transparent, seeing how it's beyond the control of the Wakefield school system, it means the Commonwealth's responsibility to provide the 75%. It's the Commonwealth's responsibility to make sure that Chapter 70 funding is adequate, which in 1993 it was, but when you look today, it really doesn't cover the cost of an average student going to school. So circumstances beyond the control of Wakefield are kind of controlling this situation in part.
Susan?
So I was going to use a work example, and as I'm sitting here thinking, I was like, wow, I managed a budget, line item by line item, that was worth $1 million. We're talking about a $40 million budget, so it really doesn't compare. But when you pull out salaries, which is about 80% of the budget, when you're talking about kind of the what's left, while I do not have experience with a $40 million budget, I certainly have worked in environments where we, in high-tech companies, where our marketing budgets were relatively large, and I was responsible for understanding, as an operations leader, understanding what was our money being spent on and, you know, were we coming in on budget or not? So I have experience there. I would also say that I'm going to go back to the example that I just used with the user fees. I do think there's a way to evaluate the way we're spending our money with this idea of want versus need. I think that there are things that we need to do in Wakefield, and I think we are still spending money on things that we want.
Colleen?
Yes, I would say that my budget experience is on a much smaller scale, obviously, than compared to the Wakefield Public Schools budget. Most recently, I was a treasurer also with the Wakefield Educational Foundation and worked with my team members, even now in my current position, to manage our budget and place our money in the best places possible, and that make the greatest impact. And looking at the Wakefield Public Schools budget and recognizing the really unexpected and uncontrollable expenses, I think it is most important to look at every line item and also give it a, you know, importance factor. And I feel like we need to also compare and contrast the money that we're spending sending children out of district and what we can do to keep the kids here as well.
Tom. Tom goes to Suzanne.
Susan. Yes, Susan, are you in favor of building a new Wakefield Memorial High School? What do you see as the advantages or disadvantages of the town moving forward with a new school plan?
So the high school project is one of the big reasons I got into this race. I am incredibly concerned about the fact that we've been turned down for funding twice now, and I feel like we need to start thinking about what other alternatives there are, if any, because the process is such a long process. You put in your application in April, you don't hear until November, and then the process starts all over again. That said, we have to do something about our high school. There are a number of issues. We've got, you know, insulation problems. The roof needs to be replaced. The science lab needs major renovations and updating. We are on warning from an accreditation standpoint, and we are going to get looked at again in And we are on warning. So if we don't fix what's going on with the science labs, we could potentially lose our accreditation. Something has to happen. Whether it be a brand-new building or a renovation here, honestly, I don't know the answer to that. I think there are pros and cons of both of those approaches, but I do think that we have got to do something. And I didn't even list all of the kind of the issues. Ventilation's are issues. Safeties are issues. The bathrooms are not handicapped accessible. We don't have a voice evacuation system that works, at least in the January 2016 assessment. That was what the report said. So we've got to do something. And again, I think I am, I am open to what that looks like, but I do believe that something has to happen to address those major issues.
You know, given the nature of this question, I'm going to give everybody two minutes on this, this sort of, the high school's a big deal. So, Colleen, you're up next. You don't have to take it, but you can have it if you need it.
Agreed. Wakefield High School is a building beyond its prime and efficient in providing the environment for modern-day learning. Though Wakefield High School has remained virtually untouched since 1972 with the last few additions, minus some minor improvements and modifications. Like Susie stated, in 2021, Wakefield is at risk of losing its accreditation. We've been on warning for the last almost, you know, 18 years, most in regard to the facilities, poor air quality, low energy efficiency in subpar science laboratories. Most are in agreement, this building is the top priority in comparison to other aging facilities in Wakefield. And Wakefield Public Schools should continue to submit their statement of interest, as well as communicate and educate the community members, so that when and if we do receive the MSBA funding, the town will be energized around renovating or rebuilding the facility to meet the needs of our students and support the instructional strategy plan that our superintendent has developed. It's really important, I think, now, and the last few years, we have this great new Galvin project that our students are flourishing in, and we then are sending our children to a building that doesn't meet the same standards and doesn't provide the same kind of modern-day learning environment, and I think that's vitally important.
Bob?
Yeah. The, this year's statement of interest was a 56-page document that was very technical. I found it to be very accurate, very thorough, and very persuasive. We've actually been in a warning status for accreditation since October of 2011. And when the National, when the New England Association of Schools and Colleges had us put a five-year progress report in, the latest iteration that we provided at the end of 2016, which was in our 2017 statement of interest, indicated we still have 23 outstanding issues affecting accreditation and keeping the school, and keeps the school in a warning status. These included the science lab, the ADA, the lack of ADA compliance, and the heat, the heat and air conditioning system, which I noted, it said that they were 44 to 56 years old, and therefore they were past their life service. And since I'm 57, I found that a little offensive myself. But the school facilities and the buildings, this is actually in the report, negatively impacted delivery of high-quality school programs, including next-generation science standards. The most glaring concern, of course, is the science labs in terms of operation, safety, and storage. And I agree with the other comments in that, that we need to do three things right now. We have to continue to spend money to maintain that structure while we're waiting for the money from, or from the MSBA. We need to continue to submit that form on an annual basis, and we need to start educating, continue to educate the community at large. Often, I think that parents take a keen interest in this, and they'll read the statement of interest and things of that nature, but it's equally important to make sure that all the residents are aware of this particular project. And that's incumbent upon the Board of Selectmen and the school committee and the superintendent, because those are the three that signed that document, that signed the statement of interest that's provided each year to the MSBA.
Thank you. Susan?
Wasn't that, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was you.
No, that was me. That was my question.
Oh, I'm sorry, right. Mark, yeah. I'm watching time there. Mark to Colleen, right, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Vincent touched on this a few minutes ago, but for the second consecutive year, the school department has come forward with a budget that, in excess of the 4% limit that they were asked to adhere to. Do you think there should be any cap on school spending?
I think there definitely needs to be a cap. I mean, we can't just spend freely. However, a lot of people are, you know, upset, rightly so, about an agreement, a vocal agreement, really, that was made at our town meeting a few years ago, when town meeting did approve an 11% increase, and we would not go over the 4% increase year to year. However, like every other budget, we have unexpected and uncontrollable and unforeseen expenses, most of them directly due to special education. And I know if you take that piece out, we would fall within our 4%, and we can't take that piece out. We are legally bound to provide the services to the students, whether it be out of district or whether it happens in district. And unfortunately, we also weren't provided with the circuit breaker funds from the state that we were promised. So that, all of that said, it affects our increase, and I believe that our FinCom has worked well and communicated well with our school committee to come to a 5.54, and still a reasonable request.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, yeah, I touched on this a few minutes ago, but what I'll just recap with Chapter 70 funding is that, you know, after 25 years, the Education Reform Act being passed in 1993, it's not only failed to keep pace with the actual education costs, it's got a problem with the fixed charges as well. Employee benefits, things of that nature, are now more than the state formula estimated costs. So therefore, towns around Massachusetts are not getting the actual amount of money in the in the foundation budget to cover the actual cost of educating the child, the children. Then you've got the circuit-breaker issue where the Commonwealth is unable, at least this year, unwilling to provide the 75 percent that it promised and only provided 65 percent. So it goes back to the situation of circumstances beyond Wakefield's control are directly affecting the budget. So I understand that there was this discussion in the past about capping the budget at 4 percent, but when circumstances beyond the town's control interfere with the ability to fulfill our legal obligation to educate our children, we have to do what's legally required and frankly, what's in the best interests of our children.
Thank you. Susan.
So I don't think we should cap spending, but I will say that when that vote came along at that town meeting, and I had been there when they had said we weren't going to go over 4 percent, and it was over 4 percent, I actually didn't vote for the budget increase on principle, because I think when you say you're going to do something, you stand by it. I will now say, though, that once I learned what, why we were going over budget, and it was special ed, which we cannot control, it was bound by contractual agreements that we had made with teachers, that I realized, like, whoa, I probably should have voted yes for this, because ultimately, it was impossible to stay within that 4 percent bound anyway. So to me, the most important thing that has to happen is around transparency so that the people in this town understand why we're asking for 5.54 percent, right? Which is in the newspaper, the detail is there, but I think we've got to get clearer about, do you understand that special ed requirements, expenses have to get covered? We cannot control it. We can't control the kids that come into our district, we can't control the kids that go into IEPs, we have to support those kids. We contractually are obligated to pay our teachers what's in their contracts, and then everything else kind of comes on top of that. So am I saying an 8 percent increase? Absolutely not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom to Bob.
Bob, in light of what we talked about previous to this, the Northeast Metro Tech is looking to build a new school in Wakefield. How does this project affect the Wakefield Public Schools, and are you for it or against it?
That's one that I don't have a lot of familiarity with. I know that the VOTEC schools are ones that encompass a larger area than just Wakefield. So, and I know in looking at that structure that there's needs, you know, for it to be, changes to be made and maybe possibly building a new one as well. But honestly, I don't know what impact, if any, that would have on Wakefield in securing, getting funding through the MSBA for the high school, because the VOTEC includes many other surrounding areas besides just Wakefield.
Susan.
So my understanding is that it does not impact our ability to get funding. I think it's great that we are going to be building a new VOTEC school in Wakefield. I think that for kids that aren't college-bound, that a technical school is a wonderful thing to have, and maybe even those kids do go off to college, but to have a place for kids to go to learn the trade, trades and other technical subjects is just a benefit to our community, whether you're from Wakefield or outside of that. And my understanding is that it should not impact our ability to get funding for the high school, so I'm all for it.
I agree as well. I think that anytime you give kids, you know, an opportunity and a choice to, other than their traditional schooling, I go past the Essex Tech School frequently and am amazed at what is offered to the students who go there, and I think that we need to continue to improve the options that our students have. I actually think the impact is a positive impact on Wakefield High School, because there are students there that are struggling, that need that opportunity, and they may go to this school and with, you know, a modern building and learn a trade and learn something that they feel comfortable with and are sharing their talents with, and I think the impact can only be positive on our town and on our schools.
Thank you. Mark to Susan.
The school committee, excuse me, plans to vote to choose the next superintendent on April 17th before the town election. Should they have waited until after the election to allow the new school committee to have a voice in the decision?
So, yeah, I personally would have liked, if I got voted in, to have a say in that. I absolutely would have, but I do understand the rationale behind it. You know, the rationale was that they would get a, have a better chance at getting better candidates and a wider swath of candidates if they opened it up early. So I absolutely understand the line of thinking and the schedule, but it, to me, it is a little unsettling that I'm running for school committee not knowing who I will be working with on a regular basis if I were to be elected. So, yeah, so I wish that maybe they had waited, but I absolutely understand. I think we might have put ourselves at risk at the quality of candidate that we would have gotten.
Colleen.
Personally, I feel the same. I would have loved to have been a part of the process on the search committee for the new superintendent. However, I'm confident with the current committee, that they've worked together for the past, give it one, two, three years. They are a pretty, you know, communicative, communicative, that's a really hard word to say, group, and I feel like, you know, their strength is that they do have history of working together so that in choosing this leader, they are coming in with a lot of knowledge just based on their experience. However, again, I personally would have loved to be involved, and it would be nice to understand sort of if we are elected, you know, what we're going into, but I think we'll learn that quickly, and I'm excited to, if elected, be able to work with our new superintendent.
Bob.
Yeah, on a personal level, I would have liked to have been involved in the process, but I'm also mindful of the fact that the school committee members have been working with the superintendent for the last few years, and I don't have that relationship, professional relationship with the superintendent. So they're better served in that regard than I am personally for having sat on that. The other thing that impressed me was the fact of the community involvement, how the subcommittee they put together includes principals, includes teachers at the schools, includes members of the public. It's a very robust schedule. It's a broad-based subcommittee that brings a lot of different talents to the table. So I'm confident that the process that they have undertaken is a very good one, and time was of the essence, and they made that clear so that they can get quality candidates, and so I was pleased with the process.
Tom, question for Colleen.
Yes, Colleen, how do you view the role of the school committee in relation to the superintendent?
I believe the role is, it's pretty well documented. We are the, for lack of a better word, the boss of the superintendent. However, we choose a superintendent for their experience, for their education, and we put our confidence in the superintendent. So I think that we act sort of as checks and balances with the superintendent, that we trust that the superintendent is making the right decisions for the students of Wakefield, for the staff, for the development of our system, but we are there to make sure that that happens, and when that doesn't happen, you know, we come together and we work together to improve the way that it's going, you know, and, but I do believe that you need to put trust in your leader. That's why they're being hired, that's why we have the job we have, and the trust should be known by that person as well.
Bob.
Yeah, often folks like to say that the relationship between the school committee, a school committee and a superintendent is that of board of director of CEO, but I see it much more as a partnership. In Wakefield, we have very delineated powers and duties for the school committee, and part of that is doing an evaluation of the superintendent, and part of that is public relations getting the word out. And that communication's important, because we're the school committee and the superintendent work hand-in-hand, besides policy implementation and carrying out policy is the communication aspect of that. And it's important that a superintendent and the school committee members have good communication skills in terms of talking with each other, in terms of talking with staff, parents, students, and the community at large. So I'm looking forward, if I get elected with a new superintendent coming in place, of helping form that partnership together so we can carry on the positive school system that we have in Wakefield.
Susan.
So I agree with much of what the other candidates have said. I think the difference with the school committee is that we are elected by the public, and so I do think that our job is to hold the superintendent accountable in some ways and to push and to ask about particular topics that we might be hearing from the community that they're concerned about, to ask questions and to, you know, to absolutely trust their judgment, because they are the expert, and certainly because I'm not in education, I would not claim to be an expert. But what I am going to come, if I were to be elected, is to bring kind of what I'm hearing from the community forward to say, I think we need to be looking at this, or have we thought about this, or, you know, I'm not sure that that's in line with what I'm hearing. And I think that is a really important role, that the relationship between the school committee and the superintendent needs to exist, and I think it does today. So I think I'll stop there.
Okay. Mark, question for Bob.
What do you think the district is doing well at the present time, and what do you think could be improved?
The district in terms of the school district?
School system, yeah.
Well, I, as I said earlier, when I was talking about the budget, one of the things that's impressed me with the school district is the communication. I do think that they're very transparent in terms of the things that they're implementing, whether it's school policy, like the Learn Anywhere. I was impressed, and maybe this is going back to my military experience, that there is a mission statement and there's core values, something that spells out for the parents and the students, these are our expectations, this is what we're trying to accomplish in terms of educating your children. I think that coming up with new initiatives is something that the superintendent and the school committee have impressed upon me, is the fact that they're able to come up with a lot of new initiatives, and if they don't work, well, they tailor them accordingly, or they come up with other initiatives. But I do find the transparency is something that really has impressed me. As somebody who doesn't have children in the school system and gets my information from newspapers and other local publications here in Wakefield, I'm actually sometimes very surprised how much I know about the school system, even though I'm not interacting with them on a regular basis as a parent with a child in the system.
Susan.
So for what I think is going well, I mean, I think everybody knows that Wakefield has a really strong arts program. I always heard that, but I didn't really realize it until the last couple of years where I started taking my kids to the a cappella concerts, some of the Beauty and the Beast performance, Joseph and the Technicolor, whatever the rest of that title is, play, right? And wow, was I impressed. And so I think we've made, we were incredibly lucky to be in a town where they've continued to make an investment in arts, and I think you just see there's a tremendous amount of talent in this community that is being showcased. Interestingly, I would say that I actually think that there's opportunity to improve transparency and communication. So I think that, yes, the town, that the schools are relatively transparent, but I think there's an opportunity to even be more so, and it's probably more around communication and amount of time. So I think we need to do a better job at communicating about what's happening at the school committee, because I don't think our community really knows what's happening.
Colleen.
I would say, over the past five years, I have seen great progress, you know, probably the 10 years before that, nowhere close to the progress that's been made in the last five years, and I would point to curriculum. We have taken on each facet of the curriculum, one by one, by hiring curriculum coordinators in science, math, and ELA, and now hopefully, if our budget passes, in social studies. And I have seen the changes directly in the work that my students are bringing home. It is challenging them, it is asking them to think at a higher level. In terms of what we can work on, again, I'm going to point to social, emotional, educational, and in development. I really believe, and the more conversations that I've had, that we need to focus on that at the earlier levels so that that is a foundation for our students as they move forward with more challenging issues.
Thank you. Tom, question for Suzanne.
Suzanne, do you feel the current level of educational funding in the district is fair? If not, how would you like to see it changed?
I'm going to give everybody two minutes on this, and then we'll do closings after that, okay? Do you want to repeat that question?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Throw you off there?
Not, could you repeat it?
Sure. Do you feel the current level of education funding in this district is fair? If not, how would you like to see it changed?
And are you referring to the $40 million budget ask, or are you talking about state funding?
This question was given to me to ask.
Oh, boy.
I did not make this question up.
Run with it.
Okay.
Run with it.
So, is $40 million the number? Again, like, I don't, I think that's a, it's a decent investment, 5 percent or 5.5 percent increase in investment is a decent amount, but when you take out the fact that a big chunk of that is for special education needs and a big chunk of that is contractually obligated for salaries, at the end of the day, the change in budget is not that much money. And so I personally would like us to be asking for more money. I think that there's probably more things that need to be addressed that aren't being addressed. I think that would be an incredibly hard thing for this community to swallow, and thus, I think that's probably the reluctance, particularly after what happened at the town meeting last year of kind of not holding to the 4 percent and kind of the brouhaha that went along with that. But I think we should be investing more than $40 million in our schools, honestly, and knowing that some is contractually obligated, some of it has to go to special ed and should go to special ed.
Colleen.
I agree, Susie. I think that we don't have a lot to work with, given contractual obligations and our sped spending. We aren't left with a lot of money where we can continuously improve the curriculum, professional development. We are always looking at what we need to take away so that we can add, and it's frustrating. I know that Dr. Smith is, it's a very frustrating thing for her, she, you don't want to take away something so that you can add and enhance, you want to move forward with what you have and keep adding to that. And, but I do understand our tax base, and I understand, you know, the type of community we live in. It would be wonderful if we could, you know, rally our community around spending more money, but we do make practical and reasonable decisions based on what we can afford in Wakefield, but always want to move forward in that.
Well, I continue to maintain that the problems that I identified before with Chapter 70 funding and the problems with the circuit breaker impact, adversely impact, our budget. I note that in November 2015, the Foundation Budget Review Condition Report came out, and it admitted from the Massachusetts Legislature that special education and healthcare costs far exceeded the formula assumptions that were made for Chapter 70, and yet still, there's been no legislative corrective action taken. So as long as we're in a situation where circumstances beyond Wakefield's control adversely impact our budget, it makes it exceedingly difficult for us.
Okay. That's going to be our last question, and now we will, you'll have two minutes in which to give a closing, okay? Just watch my signal. Colleen, you got to go first, so you get to go first again.
Great. As I mentioned before, I'm a mom of four school-aged children, wife, small business owner. I am passionate and dedicated to the Wakefield Public Schools. If I am elected to the position on the school committee, I pledge to bring a strong work ethic, my dedication, and a hunger to learn a new job. I will do my best to be a present and voice for all members of our community, making sure that all types of families and students are supported, engaged, and communicated with. I will be open-minded to all pressing issues presented, whether it be a new school building project, an alternative snow day program, safety in our schools, or any other topic. I will educate myself and collaborate with appropriate town leaders to ensure our school committee is making viable, reasonable, and fair decisions without losing sight of the need for continued progress and the momentum required to guarantee Wakefield Public Schools achieving proficiency and prominence. As a mother of four children, I look at this the way that I tell my kids. I impress upon them that fair is not equal in our house, and I think the same premise can be applied to students. They all need varying levels of support to succeed, and I think that every student needs to be afforded and needs to access the same high-quality education. I would I would be honored to have your consideration of your vote on April 24th. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Well, I'm very proud to be a candidate for the Wakefield School Committee. My wife, Tracy, and I have been married for 30 years, and we have two children, Leslie and Robbie. Currently, I'm a charter member of the Wakefield Human Rights Commission, and I'm also a member of the Bylaws Review Committee. I'm a retired Navy commander and attorney. During my 26-year military career, I served during the Gulf War and the global war on terrorism. I was a military appellate judge for four years, and as I indicated before, the first lawyer assigned to the aircraft carrier, Harry S. Truman. I also served our nation overseas, in Washington, DC, on 9/11, at the Pentagon and at the State Department. Throughout my military career, my children attended public schools in many different locations. My wife and I were members of PTOs from elementary school through our son's college. We were one of 20 sets of parents handpicked to serve on the Parents Advisory Council at the University of Maryland, which has a student population of over 30,000 students. My wife is an 11-year stroke survivor who has aphasia and cognitive disabilities. I know firsthand the difficulty of obtaining special education needs for her continuing recovery. Additionally, in Maryland, I served on the Board of Directors for Spectrum Support, Inc., which provided support services to adults with developmental, emotional, and psychiatric disabilities. A Navy legal career honed my judicial temperament, consensus-building skills, and policy-development abilities. They comprise a skill set that will strengthen the school committee's ability to work with the new superintendent in developing policies, addressing facilities issues, evaluating safety procedures, crafting budgets, and negotiating contracts. I live by the Navy Corps values of honor, courage, and commitment. It would be my honor to serve you and your children on the Wakefield School Committee. Regarding courage, I am ready to accept the responsibility of being one of seven Wakefield residents entrusted with determining overall school committee's policies and budgets. And with commitment, I promise that I will thoroughly evaluate every issue brought before the school committee, and make a well-informed, well-reasoned decision based upon the best interests of our children. I humbly ask for your support on April 24th.
Thank you. Susan?
My interest in school politics started with the Galvanize Project. My kids were young, and going to middle school seemed so far off, but I had a friend who shared with me the story of how dire the situation was. I went and toured the building, and that was all I needed to get involved. I talked to my neighbors about it. I helped get the word out via email. I stood with a sign up in the center of town, something I had never done before. Over the years, I have attended school committee meetings when topics of interest or concern had come up, and on more than one occasion, made remarks during the public comment section of the agenda. Understanding how things work in the Wakefield public schools has become something that really interests me. I decided to join the school committee race this year for three main reasons. So much change is going on within our school administration, and with change comes opportunity. Opportunity to take another look. Opportunity to think about something differently. Opportunity to continue to raise the bar. Along with that change, the fact is that I have two 5th graders at the Galvin, which means I'm heavily invested. And finally, I'm passionate about the community, our schools, and the children of Wakefield. Whether it be the high school building project, the desire to serve all children, no matter what they need, wanting to represent working parents in the day-to-day decisions being made, or wanting to communicate more proactively about what the school committee is up to, I get excited about these topics, wanting to learn more, and share with others what is happening. If you elect me to the school committee, I will actively seek input from people in the community that have different perspectives than my own. I will listen, and learn, and research, and advocate for the things that they tell me are important to them. I will ask questions, I will push for answers, and for clarity. The superintendent works for the school committee, and if elected, I will work for you, the members of this community. Thank you for considering me for one of your two school committee votes, and no matter what, be sure to get out on Tuesday, April 24th. We have a great set of candidates to choose from. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the candidates. This was a spirited debate tonight, and I'd also like to thank you for putting, you know, putting yourselves out and wanting to serve the community. I'd also like to thank Mark Sardella for his usual participation in great questions, and Tom Stapleton for stepping in here to ask questions here tonight. What was that question really about, do you know?
Couldn't answer.
Yeah, all right, okay, but anyway. Right, you guys could run with it, anyway. And again, as always, WCAT does a fabulous job, and this is so professional, it's done really well. I don't know if you have an opportunity to see this type of thing on any other community shows and that kind of stuff, but they do a real bang-up job here, and it's great service to the community. All I can say in closing here is that the election is April 24th. It's your opportunity to exercise your right and your responsibility, and not only should you vote, you should drag out your neighbors and your friends and your relatives and everybody else, okay? I think it's become more important as time goes on. And so that's all I've got for now. They want me to drag it out, but I'm sure they can come up with something else for the next three or four minutes. Not that I couldn't drag it out. But again, I'd like to thank everybody for participating. Thank you, guys, our new crack cameramen here who are offstage, and the guys in the control room. Thanks and good night.
Thank you, Bill. Good job.
Good job. Thank you.